Public hearing order. First of all, has everyone signed the signing sheet for a public hearing? Anybody that hasn't is located at the podium. Uh, while we'll move on um to the public hearing. We've got citizens input in there, but really that's uh it's it's the citizens input will be down in the regular session. This is only a hearing, uh that's it. Uh and looking at uh four A is consider a replat for fourteen sixty-nine highway two seventy-six, West Waukegan County, Texas, on the corner of Shannon Della and two seventy-six. The legal description is S four nine three one Shannon Della Station, lot twenty-three acres is one point five seven seven-two. It is all its own commercial and the request or to split this into two lots by owner Eddie and Brenda Fox. This is the bait store and the land behind it uh is what we're gonna consider the public here or in the in regular session. Uh B is consider a variance request for fifteen-on-one Grove Drive, West Waukegan County, Texas. Legal description is S five-one-three-five Waukegan Grove Edition, block three, lot ten, Zone Sequel Family or SF two. And the request is to grant a variance allowing a storage container owner Stacy Thomas. Line four C, four C, the city of West Waukegan County has proposed an instant and to institute annexation proceedings to enlarge and extend the boundary of uh city limits of said city to include the following described territory to width of a sixty-nine point eight zero six acre tract of land as the NH Darnell Survey Abstract number two-five-seven and the Z Hassel Survey Abstract number four-eighteen, both in Hunt County, Texas. Of a eighteen point three-one-five acre tract of land and as the NH Darnell Survey Abstract number twenty-five and the Z Hassel Survey Abstract number four-eighteen, both in Hunt County. At this time it is six. I'm going by my phone, I don't want to drive. Six thirty-two, took about two minutes. We're gonna adjourn this public hearing and move on to our regular session at the prescribed time, which is seven o'clock.
We're we're just now convening the public hearing.
Yes.
So we're not gonna adjourn it until we've heard from the public?
Well, we're just adjourned the public hearing part of it and then we'll get to the citizens input on the.
Public hearing is to hear from the people.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm just backward on here, so.
Or you was speaking.
Last one is here. Any any citizen input on the one, two, three, three items on the agenda? On the on the uh the annexation, they're uh consider splitting the lots into two and also the variance request. Anybody?
Is this when we speak about it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I didn't know exactly. Was the other one first? So I can go?
You know what else?
Should I stand here?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Um, so first I want to give you a couple pictures or a picture of the property and a copy of the estate of his rental purchase. Um, so I want to start off by saying I live in To walk in a grove. Um, and I also own an office building on two seventy-six, both properties of which uh I have improved quite greatly. I think some of you have actually seen my house and you know it's um I've spent a lot of time and money uh improving it over the past ten years. My goal for this property is also nothing but improvement. It is a rundown little cabin that I bought that I am looking on fixing up. So uh after I had purchased it, um and as we were getting ready to work on it, I realized I had a need for storage and there's no garage and there's no other type of storage on the property. So um I looked on the city's website to see what the ordinances were for storage and there was nothing on the city's website. So at that time I called Shannon Ferguson with the code enforcement office and I asked her what the parameters were for a storage unit on that property. She gave me four guidelines to follow, all of which I followed. It included placement of the unit, distance from property line, distance from um a power line and also uh actual where you place it on the property, it has to be placed back away from the house. So I did all those things. Um, I picked this storage container because um of its features of being sturdy, uh hard to break into. We have had break-ins of storage units in our neighborhood. This I felt was a safer alternative to a wooden structure. Um, I was not told that there was any uh parameters that didn't allow a metal structure or a steel structure. That was not discussed during the phone call. Um, and I relied on that information when I made this purchase. So I wanted you to see the amount I purchased this container, thinking that it was okay to purchase the container and put it on the property. So that is the reason that I had filed for the variance. Um, I need a place to store the furnishings while I'm working on it. I need a place to store tools and materials because there is nowhere else. Um, at the um P and Z meeting last week, we had a neighbor speak up and say that she felt it was hideous. Um, and I would just uh like to say that I'm just getting started. And this this letter from seven enforcement came pretty early after the container was placed, after it was leveled, after the lock was put on it. Um, and my intention is to beautify this property, not to make it uglier. Um, my house has been vastly improved. My brother just built a beautiful home in our neighborhood last year. Um, I have friends that have moved into the neighborhood that have totally remodeled homes. I am about improving this community in the way that it looks. I understand that it's important. I want to be a part of it and that's what I'm trying to do with this property. I just want to check my list to see if I missed anything. Um, I would like to say I also um I'm gonna hand these over to you. One reason I thought it would be acceptable also to um have this container is because of these, I keep dropping that same on the list. Um, these are storage containers that are placed around town. At my count, there were eight of them and I can see these from two seventy-six as I drive to work every day. And so as I was making the decision to buy the container and after my conversation with Shannon, I had no reason to think that it wasn't okay to buy a container for storage purposes. So mainly I just want to say I plan on events, I plan on actually painting it, I plan on making this property beautiful. Um, and I think with a little patience, if I can have a little patience and get this variance free, you'll see that that'll be the case. I also want to say that the conversation I had with Shannon, I think she could have been a little more forthcoming with information on what was allowed and maybe I could have asked different questions. I don't really know what the answer is, I just know what was said in that conversation and that's why we're here where we are now.
Stacy, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this just to uh store while you're remodeling and you're going to get rid of this the container eventually or is this a permanent feature?
If that's what I have to do, if that's if I have to use it for temporary, originally I was thinking to to leave it there for it to be used for storage whoever buys the house with its finished soul. Um, but if if it is going to be a a stipulation that after the construction is done and it it would have to go with that time, I'm willing to do that. But I do need it now.
When you were talking about the storage building, were y'all, were you talking to Shannon about a storage building or did you actually say the word storage container?
I may not have said container, I may have said unit. I I don't, I don't remember the exact question. I don't remember if Shannon does either, I just do, I just know we have a conversation.
Accessory buildings. So honestly, when I think accessory building, I don't even think storage containers, I know they're not allowed, so.
Yeah. And on my on my end of the stick, and I'm not angry with her or anything, I know, I just think, like I said, I think there was just a little bit of, could have been a better conversation, I guess. Um, but I don't know what the word accessory building means. I'm not a code person and and so I don't remember that particular term being used, but I could be wrong. Uh, but this is why we're here and that's why I'm requesting the variance.
Okay.
Stacy, do you know how long it's gonna take you to finish remodeling the house?
I'm thinking probably at least a year.
A year? So that container will be sitting here for the year. Have the neighbors in the neighborhood complained or?
Nobody has said anything to me. Um, and our neighborhood is pretty close, so I was kind of surprised when people came to protest last week, they they never spoke to me in person. Um, and I respect other people's opinions, I know that maybe it's not for everyone. I just thought it it served the purpose that I needed and that I thought it was okay. So.
Did it go before planning and zoning?
Yes.
It did. Can we ask what the ruling was?
Okay, so we eventually uh turned her down because it's against the city ordinance. However, she didn't bring up the part where she was willing to get rid of it after she finished working on the building, because that might have been a whole different outcome. I couldn't tell you that.
Any other questions from the audience or you uh any other you want to add, Stacy?
I think I touched on the major, the major things. I just, I just think the main thing to keep in mind is I'm doing this with a purpose. I'm trying to improve this property. I want my neighborhood to be beautiful. I don't want it to be ugly. I'm not trying to bring anything down. Um, and that's really, that's the main thing, that's why I'm doing it.
Okay. And the council will be able to liberate this when we go into regular session. That's why you see it twice. Yes, sir, or ma'am, I'm sorry.
I just reiterated what I said Thursday night.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't think it's for our neighborhood. I mean, it's already not, it's already prohibited anyway. But I think once you allow it, one to come in, then you're gonna have a problem with others coming in. It's right now, it's ugly as it can be, she said she's gonna paint it, I don't care what color you paint it, it's a shipping container, it's a shipping container. And I just don't think it's the right thing for our neighborhood. I hate to see it get started because I know other people will pick up on it, next thing you know, you got a whole bunch of them, so that's my biggest complaint.
Is all you've got to add or? Yes, sir.
Yes, uh, I make mine quick. Uh, I've been a resident of West Waukegan for forty-seven years and uh I've seen direction appears to be very positive, especially in in a lot in the last few years. Uh, I really think that this would be something that would unfortunately turn things negative. Storage containers are nothing more than containers that bring Chinese goods on a cargo ship, probably several hundred of them stacked on top of one another. Then they go on a railroad train stacked on one another with signage all over them. Then they go on to an eighteen wheeler. Well, at this point, the eighteen wheeler, okay, whatever, when these things are no longer usable, meaning for whatever reason they they can no longer use them commercially, they sell them to the public. I don't know what's wrong with them or anything, I don't know. But that's the point that a citizen, Stacy perhaps, would buy one and stick it in the yard. Well, the only thing it's missing are four wheels underneath. And and then it would just be a tractor trailer, trailer, which nobody wants in their yard. This thing is directly across the street from the To walk in a Grove Park. And I mean, it's on the same street as the park. Plus, there are numerous homes, I'm surprised there aren't more citizens here, that can view this thing. I mean, it is right out there for viewing. Two main streets come through uh uh To walk in a Grove and you can see this thing from, well, you can say, let's say I want to exaggerate, from probably five hundred feet each way. You can't, you can't avoid it. This is a residential area. It's not meant to have containers in it. It would greatly diminish the value of the properties around it. I mean, without a doubt, I think you all would know that if you have a nice home and all or a nice neighborhood and all of a sudden you have this ugly looking container in your side view or in your front view or behind you or whatever, you know, uh, no one's gonna want to buy it, they're gonna, they're gonna, well, I don't even say they don't want to buy it, but they're gonna try to knock down the price drastically. It's 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 an eyesore on both sides. Uh, again, nothing against Stacy here or anything like that, I just, I don't want to look at it, nor do uh nor does anyone else, I think, in To walk in a Grove.
Where do you live in To walk in a Grove?
Fourteen seventeen To walk in Drive.
Can't believe we've never met in ten years.
I'm hard to get.
Well, like I said earlier, I respect everybody's opinion, I know that it's not for everyone, I get that. Um, uh, I just, I made a decision based on what I thought was okay at the time and I wouldn't have bought that if I didn't think it was allowed. But I didn't see anything to the contrary and there was no ordinance posted online. And like I said, the conversation I had with Shannon, it didn't come to light, so. You know, that's where we are.
Is it, is it To walk in a Grove, don't they have deed restrictions?
Or H, it doesn't cover?
It doesn't have what type of building, what type of?
Not like our, it's different.
Okay.
We're voluntary, it's a voluntary uh.
Yeah, but you still have, you still have deed restrictions, everybody has to go by which.
Well, if you can have mobile homes in To walk in a Grove.
Well, I mean.
Well, that's a, that's a city ordinance, that's what, I mean, that's.
So so they would fall under that then too. I mean, if you have deed restrictions, I mean, everybody has to follow the deed, you know, that the restrictions to the deed.
I mean, well, my husband's a landlord here and he didn't tell me there were any deed restrictions on it, so.
Also keep in mind that it wouldn't be that hard. Again, I'm not sure that Stacy didn't have that in mind, but uh all you need to do is take a torch and cut yourself a door and a couple of windows and all of a sudden, guess what? You've got a mobile home. I mean, it'd be nothing to it and you can see that online. I mean, you know, they're, they're there, you frame out the windows and boom. So.
And and I, I'm not saying somebody wouldn't do that, I'm definitely not gonna do that. I don't, that's not in my alley at all. Um, but I think anyone could do that with a shed as well. So anybody could put an air conditioner in a, in an air mattress in it, so what's to prevent somebody from living in a shed? As a matter of fact, um, I think we have someone in our neighborhood living in a shed. So, you know, I'm I'm not, I'm not disagreeing, this is a conversation, but uh but that is not my intention by any means, so.
And then you also said you'd be selling this property too, so who knows what the next person's gonna do? And also it opens Pandora's box for more storage.
I, I understand.
Do we not have an ordinance, a city ordinance that restricts containers from being in residential areas? Because Stacy, I'm not going to be disrespectful, but all of these are on the highway.
I understand, they're the ones that are visible when you're driving through town.
I like the one arches and that.
I thought we had an ordinance.
We haven't, we actually also have an ordinance on those commercial ones. Uh, and none of those containers are within the ordinance, just so you know that.
Okay, that it? Any, all, all public input? Anybody else?
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we'll move in uh to adjourn the public hearing. It is six forty-seven. We will resume the regular session that we've got tonight, this is our second Tuesday of the month at seven o'clock, we'll resume that at seven o'clock. Green Brown or?
No, no.
Father, we thank you for this gathering here tonight and for the privilege to serve our city. Father, we pray that as we discuss our agenda, that we will always strive to make decisions that will help our city grow and prosper. Lead us to come up with the best possible solutions that will benefit our city and the citizens that we serve and that will glorify your holy name. Father, we pray for protection for those that are now suffering at the evil hands of those that wish to harm them. Father, you know their pain and fear and please comfort them and cover them with your mercy and your peace. Lord, we thank you and are grateful for our city employees as they do the daily work of our city and continue to watch over them and all of us as we go about our daily lives. Please keep us safe and cover us with your unending love. We ask all of these things in your son Jesus' precious name. Amen.
For the religion, to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good. Uh, announcements. Any announcements?
Market on the lake is the fourteenth from eight to two and then uh, Mead Museum of the Park will be October the twenty first. It's a double feature, Hocus Pocus and Holly Mansion, starting at seven thirty.
I have one too.
Okay, where?
Uh, the Westwakney Volunteer Club Department of the Hillary and the Fire Department want to thank the city for letting us use the park last Saturday for Gospel Fest. We had a really good turnout. Uh, everybody had a really good time. Uh, I think we almost sold out of our food that we brought. And it was, it was a really nice day and I think everybody was blessed that left there. So thank you again for letting us see that.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
The uh, trunk or treat is gonna be October twenty eighth from three to five, three p.m. to five.
I was just about to ask that.
And when is the last cleanup?
Last cleanup? The one we had two weeks ago?
Oh, we just had it two weeks ago.
November the sixteenth.
Yeah, their point's coming up.
I've got it today, the street of doctors, from the last.
November eleventh.
November eleventh.
It's the circus day.
November tenth and eleven.
They're cleaning the elevens, but they'll clean up the eleventh.
And tickets can be purchased here at City Hall and.
Police Department.
Police Department?
And then um, also any of the council that wants to come and get tickets can see me tomorrow. We'll have receipt books and tickets for you.
Okay, okay. Did you, did you have something that I saw you raise your hand?
I was pouring out champagne.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. I see. I thought you raised your hand. Um, another candidate forum is gonna be November tenth, November fourth from ten to noon. Uh, Judge Clay Rankin um, will be the moderator on that. I'd like, kind of really expect to see all three of the candidates there uh, to discuss those things that citizens may have questions about. Um, November fourth, ten to noon.
All three places.
All three places, yes, sir. November fourth, ten to noon.
Where?
Anything else?
Where?
Oh, at the, I'm sorry, Chamber. Oh, no, here at City Hall. This one's at the City Hall. Yes. This is not a polling place. We don't have an ordinance against it, so it's, it's fine. Secretary of State has confirmed it. Anything else? Moving on to citizens input related to agenda items. These are things that are on the agenda. We'll have another citizen's input. She don't have it on there, but we normally have a citizen's input uh, non-related to agenda items at the end before we adjourn. I will ask that. I'm sorry?
I said sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Um, so moving on, is there any other citizen's input with anybody? Anybody? Okay. Uh, moving on, the consent agenda items. Uh, six A is approval of the minutes. I wouldn't have any to approve. B is approved bills and those to be paid for October, September. It says October twenty two, but I believe that's October twenty three and September twenty three. C is approval of financial reports. Oh, from October twenty second to uh, September twenty third. Court report for September, police report for December, uh, September, public works uh, work order report, both completed and outstanding for September. Public works report, we don't have one except with the work orders. Permit report for September twenty three, code enforcement report for September twenty three. EDC minutes, we have none. Uh, Keith Wapken beautiful uh, minutes, June twenty third, July twenty, or twenty three and August uh, twenty three. And the planning and zoning minutes, we have none. Council, uh, Chair would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I'd like to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Real quick.
Yeah.
Um, council minutes, I haven't seen any since May. Is there something going on there?
I don't have, um, I mean, that's just it, but I plan on getting them. I've just got a lot going on.
Well, not all caught up by next meeting, but you'll have some next meeting.
I think we're missing a bunch of meetings, C, too. I mean, a lot.
No, we're not. We're missing last month's because we didn't do it last month. But we had one, we had some the other before it's on there. Yeah.
Okay, so there's not on the side or whatever. And I don't remember approving any at the, at the previous meetings.
I was gonna ask the same question and then actually for minutes for EDC, planning, zoning and the council. I mean, so we can try to, try to not get too far behind on those. Um, but I wanted to, on the discussion side of all of our consent agenda items, I wanted to bring up um, four departments for the city, which is public works. We did have a public works report, but it was put here for us. So it wasn't in our packet, but we did have one on the table for us. Um, so hopefully we can get that to where it's, it's in the packet so everybody can see it and know what we had going on in the city. But, you know, our code enforcement, the police department, permits and public works. I mean, we do have good reports from them and, you know, I, I wanna say thank you for, for what you guys are doing and for the reports that you're giving us. Um, they've all got really good information on them, you know. Um, and I wanna speak of the police department because there's been a little bit of going ons that probably everybody's seen. That I would urge anybody who has a question to come up and ask the City Hall for the Westwakney Police Department report from our chief. And it does give you some really good information to see what's been going on with our department throughout the month. So, that's all, that's all I got.
Okay, I do have a question, Ken. Can you help me with one seven one one four zero? It says donation expense. It's on the general fund. I think that's on the wrong line. I think that should come out of EDC's general fund.
Let me get over there too. What was the number?
One one, I'm sorry, one seven, one one four zero. It shows that we uh, um, it's a donation expense. Shows that they got that nine thousand three hundred dollars was taken out of general fund. And I think that's incorrect. I think that was supposed to be what was taken out of EDC.
EDC, yes.
Not that I, you know, particularly wanna give up the money, but you know, I just want it right on our, when we do our audits and stuff, you know. If we can do this right.
What was that number? What was it again? One one?
One seven, one one four three.
Okay. I'll give it for one one. I'll give it. Uh, Chair would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, agenda items A through L um, for this month or for last month.
Do a second.
I'll second it with the stipulation that they'll add on that line of interest that takes.
The one?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we wanna mention that line item number in there?
Yeah, it's uh, this, I got it.
It's true to make.
Yeah, it's one seven one, one four three. One seven one, one four three.
No, one four zero.
Yeah, it's one four zero. I think she did say one four three.
One seven one, one four zero.
Donation expense, donation expense.
Okay, all in favor?
Kevin Feigerson.
Leon Myers.
Pam Reed.
Robin Murray.
Chris Burkett.
Passed. Moving on to number seven, all business, we have none. Moving on to number eight, new business. Uh, consider replat for fourteen sixty nine, highway two seventy six, West Wapkeny on the corner of Shenandoah and highway two seventy six. Legal description being S forty nine thirty one, Shenandoah Station, lot twenty three, acre one point five, one point five seven seven two. Zone commercial and the requests are to split into two lots. These two lots will remain in, in a, of zone commercial. This is the two lots behind what's called, is it the fishing store? What is it now?
The fishing store.
The fishing store. The lots directly behind that. I guess the fishing store will retain, I don't know roughly half acres though, but this is one and a half, a little over one and a half acres that he wants split away from that uh, from that business. And those will be independently owned by Edward and Brenda Fox uh, and will be, continues on commercial. Chair would entertain a motion? Any questions or concerns, Ken?
I don't have any. Anybody else have any questions?
No.
Chair would entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the replat for item eight A for highway four, or for fourteen sixty nine highways two seventy six into Wapken, Texas uh, on the corner of Shenandoah and highway two seventy six. Legal description is S forty nine three one, Shenandoah Station, lot twenty three, acre one point five seven seven two. Zone commercial and request are to be split into two lots. The owners, Edward and Brenda Fox.
I second it.
Chair would second it. All in favor?
Kevin Feigerson.
Leon Myers.
Pam Reed.
Robin Murray.
Chris Burkett.
It's passed. Moving on to eight B, consider various requests for fifteen oh one Grove, West Wapkeny, Texas. Legal description by S five oh three five, Wapkeny Grove addition, lot three, lot ten, zone single family SF two. At the request is a grant of variance, line of storage container. Owner Stacy Thomas uh, is in the house now. Is there any, any questions or concerns on this? No questions or concerns? Chair would entertain a motion?
So. I know we typically always try to follow the planning and zoning. It's, it's just been something we've put into place here in the city. I see that there's some surp, special circumstances with this one. I still don't like the idea of approving it completely. Um, I'd like to see if there's a way that we could do a temporary since it's already there uh, with stipulation that it's moved when the construction is done under a certain amount of time and that it is fenced off so that it is not visible for anyone. Um, is there a way that we can come up with those options?
Actually, interordinances as well. Shannon, can you expand on that? There, there is a part of the ordinance that does allow a storage in a residential area, but only for thirty days. Is that it?
Yeah, it's limited. Um, but we do allow a permit to have them temporarily placed for construction. Usually it's a company that places on the.
And it's for thirty days?
I believe so. I have the ordinance in front of me that you guys actually have.
I got it in front of me. It's thirty days and then each renewal at one, it's thirty days at zero dollars here. And at one third, the initial rates that for licensed and bonded contract. So.
It covers the time on, but it doesn't.
Each renewal is.
Well, but it also, it also stipulates by a licensed or bought insured contractor, right? Is that what it says?
Well, and contractor post a bond that we could draw on to, to remove the container if it's not removed within the time period that's, that we set out. That's, that's the security that we have to make sure that they comply with the development obligations. Contractors do that. They post those kind of developments regularly and, and this would be one of the conditions. You can grant a variance with conditions. You can put a date, a set date for removal. You can require them to put a fence around it as condition of allowing it to remain for whatever period of time you permit. You can do that if you choose to do it. I believe because PNC has not approved this, it will take the affirmative vote of at least four of you to do that, the super majority.
Stacy, how long have you owned this house?
I have owned it for one year.
I just said, this is kind of a double edged sword for me because I wanna help her because she's trying to make improvements in her neighborhood. And I, but I understand also the residents that have to deal with this. So it's a really hard thing for us. And because I sit on this city council, I feel like that I have to abide by what our ordinance is saying. So it's nothing against you or it's nothing against the residents that are, you know, that are objecting to it. It's just, we, we cannot set a precedent because if we do this for one, we have to do it for everybody. And I hope you understand that. I mean, I'm not trying to say no to this, but, but I, I just feel like I have to abide by what the ordinance says.
Well, I understand. I wanted to abide by the ordinance myself because when I called and asked the questions. So, you know, that's the pickle that we're in and, you know. I mean, I wanna do things right. I have a current permit on my house. I'm remodeling my kitchen right now. My mom built a house last year. We had a permit for that. I had a permit for my fence when I put it up. I'm not trying to avoid not following city ordinances. I mean, we had a permit when we remodeled our building. I'm not trying to avoid that. I wanted to stay in the parameters and, and, and do. But I feel like, you know, I, I've shelled out some money and there's no way around me losing money if I have to move this and that's less money I can put into the remodeling of the, of the home.
Would you be uh, willing to build something around it to make it where it's not such, as this gentleman said, it was an eyesore for him? Would you be willing to do that?
Just specifically around the container, something temporary?
Yes, so that way it just doesn't stick out. I did drive through there and I saw it and, and it really does stand out.
How tall is that building that, that shit is? That's a quick change. So anything over six foot requires another. Well, the, the, it can go eight foot, but the top two foot have to be a lattice type, you know, something you can see through. So that would require another variance to, for, to do the fence around it. So then you're, now you're talking a double edged sword now.
You're backing this a condition of the variance. So you could do that.
We could do that, but um, on the permit side of things for remodeling, um, I get your, your electrical plumbing, building, all those permits. Those are six months, right? That's typically.
They're six months with a six month extension.
Okay.
After that, they have to reapply.
Right, okay, that's what I was wondering. I, I thought my memory was correct, but so, I mean, it's six months and that means the year would probably be close to the, I think she said year earlier. Um, that would be close to it, so I don't know. I mean, you'd have to file for an extension. Um, and, and I feel bad because I, I put the cart in front of the horse on the last one. And, and I feel bad because I, I put the cart in front of the horse on the last one, but I'll, I'll deal with that later. We should ask for PNC information on that last one.
I think we did, he already.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm talking about on the, on the first one, on the one that we already passed, but.
Oh, the, the split on the.
Sorry, it was a squirrel. I just thought about it and said it out loud, so. But, but we should.
PNC had approved that, hasn't it?
Of course.
They did, they did approve the first one, but I, but I, I made, I had it in my mind before we came here even.
It's this one that we didn't approve.
Yes, sir.
We didn't have all the information in mind. She was talking about, which was separate from all that either, that you put a fence around it. What kind of fence? Is it going to cover everything in the yard, you know? All of that would have made, made a difference.
Actually, I did, I did say.
No, you brought up the fence, but it wasn't brought up to be temporary.
Oh, it wasn't brought up to be temporary.
So I would ask the neighbors if it was completely out of sight.
Well, he doesn't live near the neighbors.
For a year.
I think Nancy would be, how big is the fence currently?
It has to be eight foot to cover it. I mean, it has to be completely covered if that would be the only way we would.
It would, it would still be visible because the six foot plus the two foot of lattice, you'd still see it.
Or you could have.
I'm just going by what the ordinance is now.
But it would, but even then, it would still just be the, the year of the building time. It would still be temporary.
I'm sorry, the.
So the fence would just go around just the storage container and it would come down when the storage container left?
It would have to.
Right.
Um, but it would have to be built in such a way that I, we could get in and out of the storage container. Because obviously the doors have to open and you have to get stuff in and out of it, materials and things.
Is there a gate on that, on, on that part of the fence?
Yeah.
Do you have your thoughts with PNC?
Yeah, the whole front of the, uh, the whole front of the thing is, is a gate. And it being tall like that and it being temporary, I think we would probably pass that. Uh, what do you think? Where do you go?
He stepped cut that way.
He wasn't even present when I was making the presentation. He came in late.
Yeah. But he's still on the board.
I know, but he didn't hear what I had to say is what I'm saying.
Okay.
He didn't hear what I had to say.
Anyway, I think that we would probably let that go if we knew we could do that for temporary. But you gotta have some kind of way to make sure that it is temporary. Because you don't want to put these people out any longer than you have to.
Well, we're just, we're not accustomed to doing one year. I mean, usually the major construction like this is done by a company, contractor, whatever. And they're, they're all for getting in and getting out. So we've just never been hit with the extending one out past the six month.
I think the bond he was talking about.
And, and if you know we don't get an insurance bond, which might be expensive. We could require a cash bond, which she would simply deposit cash bond with us for the year at the end of the year. If she removed it, she'd get her cash back. If not, we, she'd forfeit the bond and we'd use the bond and remove the container.
Ever get that?
No, I didn't hear, I didn't hear. What you're saying, I didn't hear what you think.
As opposed to requiring her to go get it, typically the developer, most of the developer's bond, it covers the cost of doing infrastructure and all the things they promised to do before dedication and all. And those can be big bonds and be expensive bonds that developers build into the cost of their projects. This is a much more limited, you're probably not going to find an insurance bond that will do this specific thing. So what we would require is a cash bond that would permit us, and I would suggest the amount on that invoice right there, the cash bond, three thousand dollars. At the end of the year, if she does what she says she does, she gets her cash back. If she doesn't, we use the cash to remove the container.
And the fence if it's part of the, if it's part of the variance?
We could remove the fence too, but, but the container especially.
Seems like it makes it just that much more of a task.
It's, it is a task. It's a task. But as long as she does what she says she's going to do, it's not a task. We give her the money.
Right.
Well, I think that the invoice shows the cost of the container plus moving it. I don't think the cost of the container is, would be, that doesn't make sense to me that that would equate to the cost of a bond. So you're just talking about the expensive movement yet.
Yeah, but it's still going to be your container. We're going to have to do something with.
You gotta find ways to put it.
You gotta find ways to put it.
Yes, where is it going to go when it's, it's moved?
I'd sell, I would have to sell it because I don't have anywhere else it could go. It would have to be sold.
Is that what you intended originally?
Yeah. Yeah, because if I, well, originally I didn't know I couldn't have it. Originally, my intention was for it to be a permanent storage and to be a part of the backyard decor. Uh, because they are, they can be turned into nice, you know, uh, things to look at. They don't have to be ugly. It just happens to be ugly at the moment. That's why I just got it. But I, I can't put up three thousand dollars bond for that. I, I can't do that.
Sure.
It's just too much.
I want to concur to off something that Robin said about, I think Robin said it. If not, I apologize, but. If we do this, this time, then we're going to, is that what you said somewhere in there? If we do this, this time, then we're going to have to do it another time. And I guess what I'm trying to say is, I think as a council, I think we need to make the right decision that we're not having to have these conversations over and over and over again to have more citizens upset over and over and over again. Whether it be the citizen that's dealing with this same type of issue, plus the citizens that live around it, maybe like we have here tonight. So I, I really think that it's, it's better that, you know, we, we have this one situation that's bad. For, for her, it's, it's bad for her and, and it's bad for us because none of us like to make that decision. But instead of having to rehash this again another day with a whole nother set of citizens, I think we need to have that in our thoughts when we make our decisions.
And she also just stated that she does not have the money that it would take to put up the bond too. So that would be a hardship for her too. So that kind of pours it all.
Well, you're talking about a bond, plus the cost of the fence.
Right.
I mean, so that's a lot of extra money, you know? That's not easy.
I'm, what I'm afraid to happen is that somewhere halfway through this remodel, you sell this house to somebody else and then we're dealing with somebody else that didn't make this agreement.
Well, that's not, I, I mean, I understand that, that. I guess nothing's impossible, but that's certainly not my plan at finding these.
Is it possible to get some wood siding and put it on the exterior of the container and make it look like a wooden stored building? Uh, would that be acceptable to her and the neighbors? Could that be a compromise of some sort?
No.
No, I don't think so either.
No, if you put lipstick on a pig, you still got a pig.
Right.
That would make it look like a wooden building.
So then you need a roof too. You know, normally you don't build, you don't build sheds or whatever with a five roof, right? So that now you're talking about, and she said she doesn't have the money.
I see, sir.
It was just a suggestion.
No.
Want to take it?
It remains a storage, it remains a storage container.
I make a motion that we deny this request just because it goes against everything we've got in place. And like you say, we're going to be doing it over and over again. But I do, in my motion, would like to return her any fees she paid for this variance. If we can do that.
Do you know what the, what money that we collect for variance? Do you know what that is? Do you?
I, I pay three hundred dollars.
Yeah, but you know what, why we collect that?
Well, I know because we have to send out notices and do all that stuff, but.
And the better.
But part of the problem is, was the miscommunication between our city hall and her. If we'd have had a sheet of paper that said you're putting a, a, a exterior building on your property and this is what's allowed and it had on there in great big letters, no storage containers, we wouldn't be sitting.
Can you agree with, with me on, on that?
And, you know, and the three hundred dollars is the least we can do to get out of this mess, right?
Wait, hold on. So you're, you've got, you've got a motion.
I'm second.
Given with the, the variance be refunded?
Or is that part of the motion? We're going to deny the.
Deny the motion and refund.
Our variance.
But that's with the, the container being removed?
Yes, it's got to go.
Okay.
Down.
So you're making that motion there. Everybody else follow that?
Yes.
Are you second?
Second.
Pam's second. All in favor?
Kevin Feigerson.
Leon Myers.
Pam Reed. Reluctantly, Robin Murs.
Reluctantly, Chris Burkett.
Okay. Fast. Moving on to eight C, which is an annexation. Uh, Mr. Justin Scribner is here tonight to talk to us about it. This is the sixty-nine point eight acres, uh, in NH Darnell survey, abstract number two fifty-seven and the ZSL survey abstract number four eighteen, both in Uncanny. And also, is this also include this eighteen point three one five acre tract of land out of the same NH Darnell survey and abstract number twenty-five, as well as the Z asshole survey, abstract number four eighteen? Uh, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions, Mr. Scribner. Some of which I think we've already answered some of them, but. Shout out to y'all just speaking on this. I don't have a chance to look at this all weekend.
So how are y'all doing? Would you like me just to give you the spiel or you want to ask questions?
Uh, just kind of give us a, a kind of a blueprint or a draft.
Okay.
If you will.
So my name is Justin Scribner and I am a part owner in three in property development. So we bought that seventy acres with the intent of coming in and developing it out. And, and they're all, all the lots are between six tenths and seven, seven and a half, uh, tenths of an acre. We do have one four acre piece, but it's got a big tank on it, so we had to do that. Um, the plan is we've got it divided into four phases. There's a total of one hundred and six lots. Uh, we have a two acre piece that comes down and touches highway two seventy-six there on the east side of the doughnut shop. That's going to be our primary entrance and we'll have a secondary coming off of Hillcrest. Uh, the reason there's a hundred and six lots in about ninety-five homes is we had to lock that up as you work through the entrance. We didn't want to leave it in a whole two acre piece. So there won't be any houses there. It's just going to all be entrance and, and whatever we can do to make it look really nice. We are planning to gate it on both ends, so it'll be a private subdivision. Through talking with the SRA, there's about a seven acre piece that's got quite a bit of drainage. We're going to dedicate that to the HOA, so it'll be a community park. And, and for the folks there to use, you can't build on it. It's all SRA property. That way, it relieved a little headache for those guys because you kind of work around the semicircle and it's hard to get each person access to the lake through that. So by making it a public access, it's all for that for us. Over on the west side, there's going to be maybe another two acre piece. It'll be the same, it'll be a small public area there to access the lake. It's, it's got a lot of elevation in it. But we're going to have a varying degree of property values. As you can imagine, there's, there's quite a few lots that touch the lake. They'll be the most expensive and as you work away, the price will drop drastically. Um, the hope in it is we're going to build some really nice homes on the lake around between two thousand, twenty-five hundred feet homes. And then as you work away, the houses will get slightly smaller as the lots go down. The thought was that way everybody could have a shot at, at buying a house there. It wouldn't all be too expensive. And it would move along and, and I think, uh, move this project forward. Uh, but we do have it divided into four phases. Um, the first phase has forty-four lots. Second phase will have seventeen and then fourteen, and then the last phase will have thirty-one. The, uh, the guys are out there right now. We've been clearing brush for quite a while and they've about got that done. And hopefully next week, we're going to start rough cutting the roads in. So it kind of all become obvious to you guys that you want to come out there and have a look at it. Right now, it looks like a bunch of land that kind of got nice and clear it off. But the, the same guys that are clearing it will be doing the infrastructure, uh, along with Michael's blessing. We have, we've hired you, the same engineer y'all use. Um, and he's doing all the water sewer, all that. He did the drainage plant there at Jacob and Martin. Um, so we had to start with the drainage study, so he reckoned out all the water. Where does it go? He gave us that. It's pretty obvious. Most, half the water goes into the lake and the other half goes to two seventy-six in a nutshell. Everything he found along two seventy-six handles that runoff because it's currently doing it. Um, so once we move from there, from the drainage plan, we move into the infrastructure plan where he's going to lay out the water in the sewer along with Michael's blessing and that'll be where we go there. But I've pulled all the permits that I'm aware of. We've got TCU, TCEQ approval. We've got those permits, uh, where they basically just want us to mitigate any runoff from the bare ground into the lake. And we have sealed fences and erosion controls and all that stuff in place. But basically, it, it, we're not giant companies, me and two buddies, two buddies got all the money. And, um, but we've been, uh, I've been doing this out, out west of Fort Worth, out close to Stevieville. Putting one in there. That's where I got my feet wet. It was in my hometown, so it was kind of easy to learn it. And then we picked up when I found this place and I loved it. I thought it was beautiful. Um, there are two cemeteries plotted on this property. There's a, about a one acre one. And we had the survey stakes and we found headstones on it, so it's, it's obvious. But it's, it's, it's in an area about as big as y'all's desk. And, but we've allocated one full acre because that's what I thought we needed to do. On the quarter acre, there's no monuments of any sort, so we simply have it designated as where it's supposed to be. Um, I've walked and looked and looked and looked and the, the previous owner, Ms. Smith, she told me that long time ago, twenty or thirty years ago, there were some wooden markers, but they got vandalized. That's been the end of that.
Can I ask you a question with that? Cause I had, that was one of my notes I put on there. Um, who is going to maintain the cemetery? Will you do that or will the family do it or the H O L do that?
We're going to, with that, with the one acre dedication, the thought is we'll get it all nice and clean, fence the actual cemetery, do some picnic table stuff, some kind of little one acre theme where people can go. That way, you know, it's eighteen fifty-four, I believe is when one of the headstones is dated. And I'm still unclear. We found four stones, but I think they're head and foot. Um, I talked to an older gentleman in Quineland that, that had a lot of interest, but he wasn't certain. So I can't, can't tell you for sure how many stones there are that, that are separate.
Will you have that, uh, maybe cordoned off somewhere that, because I know there's going to be equipment and things that are going to have to be present in that area where those, it's, those stuff won't be.
Oh, those dirt guys are scared to death of it. They don't want no more.
Okay, good.
Yeah, in fact, that was one of the worst thing they did. They went in, cleaned it out and found it. And one of the stones has kind of grown into a tree. And we wanted to do something with the tree because it's cracking the stone and they were like, man, we're not, we're not touched.
Trying to think of some bad juju.
Yeah, that's exactly what they said. We don't, we don't want no, no, no bad juju at all.
Thank you, Brent.
Oh, yes, ma'am. So that's very important to us. And I tried to find a way to name the subdivision using the information on that, but that, we just could, I just thought it would be really neat. Uh, we went with Wichita Bay Estates because it's Wichita Bay right there in front of us. But yeah, like I said, we're, we're super excited, glad to be bringing this into West Wacaney. Everybody we've met has just been fantastic. Some questions?
You mentioned a seven acre park.
Uh, thank you.
Our previous conversation is also going to have a two and a half acre park, is that correct?
Uh huh, yes, yes. It'll be down on that, that west side, that's why I say we're, we haven't got it exactly mapped out, but it'll be two acres plus.
Okay. And, um, you've got two different size homes. I'm sure this will vary. I've got fifteen hundred and twenty-five hundred.
Right, they, they vary all the way between there. We've got, like I said, the fifteen hundred is, is some of the smallest. And then they rank fifteen, eighteen, uh, two thousand, twenty-two, twenty-five.
Yes, and, and those are price per square foot, not including the lot. So those, the price of the home would, would include the, uh, build out, uh, per square foot and then the lot fee.
Yes, sir. And like I said, we'll have five graduating numbers getting higher as you get closer to the lake, so.
And, oh, go ahead. I've got, uh, you've got, uh, you're right out of the chute. You're talking about building three lake homes, which will be the larger, largest homes down near the lake. And you'll have two other lake view homes, which will be the smaller square foot. Is that right?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that way we can kind of see what the market wants. I don't, until we start doing it, I don't know if everybody's going to want their, a big, nice lake house or kind of intermediate house or just a cool house, you know, off the water.
And are you going to be doing the, the roads into there?
Uh huh.
Or are they going to be constructed out of?
So we, we've been in discussion. My plan is to asphalt them. We're, we're road basing them. And then, uh, I think, uh, we talked about some different options, but, but asphalt seems to be the best option now. Um, at, at, at home, chip silting is the way to go, but here the ground moves a little different. That's not the best way to go.
I will tell you that I've only had one person that I've heard, and it really wasn't a complaint, it was a concern about hill, the road that they're now being torn up by the construction vehicles, the, the cement trucks and all that. If that should happen, I know we're going to probably be responsible for that. Would you be willing to help us with that if something?
When we start that, they'll come off two seventy-six. They're going to come to our big entrance. Right now, we're just not there yet, so they're, right now, I have, there's three guys out there working. It's a family, it's father and two sons.
And she's got a very, very valid concern. Is that, uh, we've, we've experienced that in different areas of the city, that, that, uh, that old sand is great. It's kind of an inexpensive way as far as chip steel versus concrete and everything. But we have had a lot of heavy equipment on our, our garbage trucks. The bus is not so much of a garbage truck for that. Another big equipment coming down the road and it just, just eat. Another big equipment coming down the road, and it just, just eats away.
And that's a narrow road.
So, you can imagine, my concern is this, there's a ton of money getting invested into this, and then so, it's the long game for me. So, I want everything to look as, as awesome as we can.
Did you have a temporary entrance out of two seventy-six, like with a culvert?
Yeah, there is one on that lot, yes. And then there's, behind the Donut Shop, there's actually lots of pasture gate. So, when they bring their, when they brought their dozers in, they turned, went down through that lot, went through the back of the crest. They're staying off of Hillcrest, which are big stuff.
So, I only had, I only had one question, and on the agreement, it says the city of West Waukani agrees to waive all city fees that are considered to be local fees, such as permitting, impact, or cap fees.
So, they would have permits for the builds, the houses.
So, we are...
They're doing all the infrastructure, and then when it's done, inspected, approved, we'll adopt it.
Okay.
Which is the more expensive end of it.
It's the way TCEQ has instructed most municipalities to go, is the developers do all the infrastructure. And the concession is, if they're putting in a system, you're going to adopt, i.e. roads, ditches, water, sewer. Then you make the concession that they don't pay for cap fees. They don't pay for any of this stuff. You're adopting a very expensive system.
So, I wanted to make sure that was clear every turn on that.
The city does do inspections on every single step of the process.
And it could cost the city money, and they're paying for it. That's, that's kind of, that's kind of the agreement.
Yes, absolutely. And he's actually offering more than you.
Right, oh, absolutely. And then, like, all the way to the water meters, I think what was discussed is they were gonna have him pay, pay, pay for the water meters, right? Instead of the city having to go third party all that, he will let them know that, hey, we're bound from ABC meters. Here's the contact guy. Call him and pay for them.
Yeah, the goal is for you to guys, at, at the end, we're gonna probably fuss somewhere around here. I'll mess something up that was unintended, but it was to start on a good relationship and end on one. I want it to be cool for y'all because I'm gonna have my own house in there. So, right now, we have one lake house that, that's over kind of by the state park. It loved it, but that's what brought me over here. When I saw that, I was like, "Oh, that, that's even better."
That is beautiful property. I saw it before you bought it. Yeah, it's really nice.
We're excited for you. Excited for us.
Yes, and that's what, right now, I'm having some graphics. They're gonna be a graphics company to make all this really pretty, and, and I'll funnel it to whomever I need to, so they can display it, and we can get it out there. I know there's a lot of questions from the citizens. What I was trying to slow down is contractors and people calling me until I was ready to give them an answer. Right now, we're not sure exactly. Depending on the roads and how long that takes, it'll take a little time to figure out the house built and whatnot. But as of today, the most current update is they believe they're gonna start on roads Monday, which I'm super excited for.
And there won't be lots sold to just whoever on the concession they're gonna build? That won't happen because they don't want empty lots just sitting there.
Yeah, we actually talked about that too. Good point that he would consider, put it wrong. You would consider selling a lot to a builder that wanted to build their own home or whatever.
Right, if we could do them in lots of five with a, hey, you got it in two years, they gotta be complete bills. I don't want people to invest in a lot, sit on it for ten years, and hope it doubles or something.
And that's easy. You can put a deed restriction in there for that.
Yeah, but we'll form an HOA to, to, because they have to take care of the, of the cemeteries, the park, all that stuff. And we'll handle some stuff in, in excess to your city ordinances, so it'll be, but I absolutely hate HOAs. The rules are gonna be tamped down as much as I can, just to kind of maintain that, so.
That's the big plan for the city, because you've got entrance gates. So, you're gonna keep a lot of things out and a lot of things in, so.
And, and that's the, the takeaway from this, is if y'all are sitting at home and you think, "Hey, I wonder, just call me." Don't, don't wonder. Don't, don't, don't let anybody get you mad. Don't, if you hear something, just ask me. I'm, I'm super easy to hold up. And I want this to be very positive. In, in the world we live in, some people want to argue with everything, and we can, we can smile, and this can be really cool if we want it to be.
So, do you have any, are the, are the HOA members supposed to maintain the gardens?
Well, that's something that we've, we've talked about. I'm not certain on that just yet. We're still ironing that one out.
Have you already got any interested people buy, interested in buying, or?
Yes, yeah, we've had a whole bunch of real positive interest. And, and so when I started this, I thought, "Man, everybody's gonna really jump on the lake houses right away." And the, the smaller houses, maybe not so much, but it's fifty-fifty. There's a lot of people just wanting to get out in this area. I think very, very, very soon, you guys are gonna have a lot, have a really beautiful area. I think it's, the development's coming. There's, there's interested people. That's what made me choose this. It's, you're set up for success, um, as long as we, as we all work together, I think, for sure. But definitely, the messaging is, I'm, we are paying for every piece of this. You guys are just saying, "It's, it suits us." When Michael gives us a thumbs up, we'll cover up the hole and be happy.
I do got one question. On the entrance, the main entrance, are you gonna put like pretty flowers and stuff in there or something?
It will be pretty for sure.
Palm trees?
You don't have to water them.
No.
They look interesting, though.
The other day, I met the daughter to the man that built the home. She came out yesterday, as a matter of fact, and she was wanting to get some things, marlins out of the house.
That's right, yeah.
So, super, totally awesome lady.
Oh, yeah.
And they had actual, real, true blue palm trees alive, and, and a long time ago, you had them shipped in, and there was one left, and it's not with us anymore. It's, it was, it had no, it was just a trunk that was dead. And she said that was the last of the, of them. So, have all those big, pretty steel ones if, if, I think the city, uh, maybe put them in the park is what we thought.
Hey, he said we could tag them, put them in the park.
Are you gonna put in all the infrastructure before you start building?
Well, I'm, I'm hoping to start building while we're putting in the infrastructure, because it's gonna take us eight months to build a house, probably. And if we start clearing and benching and doing all those things while we're building, that's what I'm hoping for. Yeah, the phase one, that's what we're gonna focus on. So, the only way we return on our investment is sell the house. So, that way, we can do two things at once. But, uh, and then, like I said, we've had several builders reach out to us, mainly tire kicking, but if we can sell them in clumps and recover a little bit of money as we go, I'm, I'm wide open about anything. So, yes, I'll, Shannon has my phone number. I wish that all y'all would get it and just...
We have a question here. We got a question.
You mentioned the four stages. Do you have target dates for each of those stages? Can you share those with us?
Well, so my phase one is the only target I have. I want to be building by late November, and then...
Late November, this, this next month?
Yes, yeah. I want to start be, getting the lots ready to start building on. I would love to have houses get ready to sell, or at late spring. Now, as far as the second, third phase, I do not have, because it's, it's hard to know with this economy in this world we're living in exactly how it's going. Two years ago, I would say we'd be done in two years.
Right, with all four?
Yes. Um, I think with the interest we've seen so far, and, and there's been tons of agents reach out, everybody seems like they have some clients that are dying to do this, so, uh, speed is my game. That's what I'm really, really do at.
Well, that's certainly at your advantage.
Yes, sir. That's what I say. We're gonna move as fast as possible.
And hours.
Yes. Well, thank y'all very much for your time.
All right, we sure appreciate it, Justin.
Yes, sir.
And I'm sure we're all gonna be contacting you soon. I know Michael's got a close relationship already, so.
So, are you asking sewer or get sewer? So, interesting, though. No, the, it's gonna go down through the edges.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Yeah.
So, kind of got the bearings here, two seventy-six. So, everything from that drill right there, all of that probably goes this way. Doesn't seem like it, based on our ground study from that one, it comes down, it goes down to the crest, and goes to two seventy-six.
Right, right. Sorry, we just had to get some clarification between our council and our development partners, as far as, this is a hearing for the, for this. We're gonna have two more hearings?
So, we have our second hearing Tuesday next week, and then we'll finalize the ordinance on our normal council meeting in November. And we'll do the replac, resum, and talk.
Development agreements will be on that, agenda.
If it needs to be, yeah.
I think it needs, I think you need the finalization and then the development approval.
Yeah, and we've got a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday night on this too, uh, we're hearing. So, that's next Tuesday to seventeenth, everyone. Seventeenth, six thirty.
We need to make sure that he knows, Justin, what we were just talking about is, so when we do our meeting for...
Tuesday next week?
Well, not Tuesday. We don't need the development agreement then. We need it on the finalization when we're in the vote. Because Tuesday next week will just be basically another hearing.
And it'll, well, and it'll also be the first reading on the...
Yeah, that is your finalization as far as when we're gonna do it. So, we do our first reading of the ordinance next week.
Next week.
And then on the November council meeting, we do the second reading. It has to be so many days out from the...
So, when do you want the develop, development agreement?
We'll put, we'll do it in November, the development... Well, a November meeting.
So, we'll need that in November.
We'll approve the ordinance anyway.
I didn't ever see it.
And then the service plan agreement is also in there that's...
It's part of the annexation plan. It's part of the required annexation plan. We don't have to approve it separately. You're approving the service plan when you approve the annexation.
Is that clear?
Yes, sir.
Are we ready to move on? Okay, uh, number, item number nine. Oh, yeah, one, yeah. Okay, so item number nine is discussion and our actions to approve the West Waukani Economic Development Corporation offer of a loan to help reopen Fat Cat Bar and Grill located at fourteen thirty-three East Highway two seventy-six here in West Waukani. I've, I've done some, um, research on numbers and stuff of where we're at with, uh, our sales tax revenue and our, uh, mixed beverage use tax. Currently, there's only one, uh, business that generates mixed use beverage tax, and that would be Rancheros. Looking at the numbers, if you look back, um, it, the budget, the, but the amount we budgeted for income on that mixed beverage use tax, it went through the roof, uh, whenever Fat Cat was here before. And I want to make, this is where this has been in the air a lot today, in the last few days, when we're talking about EDC. Everyone needs to know that EDC is funded solely on sales tax revenue. That's it. There's no property taxes or anything like that that go to the EDC. One other thing, I believe, from what I can see and tell, the majority of the sales tax revenue comes from people from outside of the city. It's not, it's not people that live in the city creating the sales tax or generating, because the majority of the people that come to Tenka, the majority of the people do not live in the city limits. They live in South Hunt County. But there's no, the only place you can get liquor besides here is Terrell, and then Greengul just started. Well, no one in South Hunt County, they love Tenka because you can walk in there, if you're a regular, they'll know your name. They'll know what you drink. They know everything about you. They know about your, your spouse, your kids. They can tell everything, all of that. So, and that's, that's a big thing. But we don't get any, uh, we don't get anything from the service clubs, but the only generation of, of mixed beer, beverage use tax is from Rancheros, and it was with the Fat Cats. I believe that the, uh, Fat Cats, I met with Jason when he, when they first started this project. Of course, nobody knew, really knew what was going on, and nosy me, I'm sure a lot of you too are, you know, nosy as well, to find out what was going on. He probably put a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars into this business upfront. And then once, once he got rolling, he was making money there from, from what I can recall, the conversations that we had. And I noticed he's in the audience, and I, um, he was, he's, he was paying out, out of, out of the profits, four to five thousand, maybe even as much as six thousand dollars a month in sales tax. And now, whenever he got in a hole, whenever he had to, he spent almost eighty thousand, I think it was, if I recall correctly, on a new roof, a new, uh, work on the cooler, um, uh... The AC, um, all of that cost, you know, upwards of about eighty thousand, had to come right off the bottom line of his. His business did not fail in the sense that he didn't have a customer base. He had the customer base. They were there every day, day in, day out, and they had a, a menu that was very unique to this area, not seen in anywhere but Greengul or Terrell, uh, to, to kind of make a, a comparison. But it was a, it was a big deal. So, what I'd like to do, I'd like, I would like to re, uh, ask for a reconsideration on this from the EDC to make it a grant other than a loan, because thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars, really in business today, that's chump change, and it's not gonna go very far at all. And I would like for the EDC to reconsider a grant. Now, the grant, let's say we did go with a loan. I don't know what the terms would be, but let's just say five years. Five years for a loan at thirteen five.
And then we got five percent, is that all we ever got?
I know five, but I'm talking about the length of it, five percent. But actually, uh, if he was to open up tomorrow and, and, and this business run, we're gonna realize three or four times that amount, same amount of money over a couple of years, because he, I mean, he's burying us with sales tax more than just about anybody around here. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Alicia Lee, and, uh, I had several people that contacted me concerning Fat Cats. I don't know Jason. I've met him maybe one time, went in there several times, but only met him one time. I've had several, uh, citizens that have contacted me concerning his business. And they said, "Alicia, can you go over there and speak and let them know that they need to reconsider the loan? It needs to go back to the EDC for, for reconsideration." People around here really like his business. You know, they really like his business. He's paid all of his debts. Everything is current. Paid all of his taxes out. His loan is current. He brings ve, revenue to the city.
The loan? You're talking about on the...
On his building, maybe, okay? Uh, he brings revenue to the city, brings revenue to EDC. The city will recoup their money when, once he opens up. His business was always full. He had plenty of customers there. His product that he had, Cajun, nobody else around here has it. And, um, so I, they, they contacted me, and they said, "Alicia, will you go out and speak for us and ask that it go back to the, the EDC for revision? And that they get a grant and not a loan?" If it's gonna bring you money, why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you go ahead and give him a grant? If it's gonna bring, you're gonna have, I mean, the guy just here speaking about houses. You have a business that was successful. Why wouldn't you give him a grant instead of a loan? I mean, it's gonna bring this city up. It's not gonna bring the city down by you giving him, uh, a loan, I mean, a grant. I mean, my God, I mean, it's gonna bring everything up. You've got houses going up. You've got this business that was very, very successful. Give the man a grant. If you've got the money to do it, give it to him. I mean, I think that, I mean, you know what? It, it wasn't a failure. You can't look at it as, as, as a failure.
And would you say we have more of myself on the board, and...
Well, I think you need to let it go back and, and, and retalk it out.
I would be happy to revisit it. I'd be happy to revisit it. But I want it, I want it clear that, uh, it will be the board's decision on, on what they decide to do on that. And it has to follow certain laws and regulations. So, it will be to, I have no problem with bringing it back to the EDC, but it will go back to the fact that everyone has to go through the board again.
One thing I haven't heard, heard of...
It's time of the essence.
It's time of...
Yeah, that's the everything I need, everything.
He wanted to open by November. Yeah, Jason.
Here, come talk to him. Come talk.
That's all relevant. I mean, I, here's, this was in plans anyway. I, I've never, I wasn't going to fail. I put my entire, uh, savings that I made, I mean, I, I made a little bit from selling my house in Austin, it was forty thousand. But I, I'd saved up a hundred grand and put it all into construction because I was building a place that I wanted to be at. And I figured that was for everybody, that I could eventually retire from doing what I'm doing and just do this permanently. So, put everything into it, ran into a few, um... Um, so, put everything into it, ran into a few, um, so if you have a hundred grand, you put it into it, and then basically, everything you put into it came out, uh, had to be, come back out in a matter of six months. I mean, I, I literally, I mean, we were, you know, my wife and my kids were ordering food, and that's, we didn't have anything in the fridge, you know, to make sure that our employees got paid, because it was our loans to bear, and it was our problems to bear as business owners, you know? Uh, twenty-five thousand for a roof, uh, insurance did not pay, uh, because I had a construction insurance. We hadn't opened yet. We happened one week before we opened. If I'd known that, I'd rather have paid the extra five hundred dollars than bring you, it would've gave me probably sixty thousand dollars. We did it out of pocket, you know, and meanwhile, you know, employing, we had twenty-one employees.
I was probably gonna ask you, uh, how many people?
We, we, we chose, I, I never wanted somebody to walk in there without being greeted. I never wanted anybody to walk in there without being seated, and I, you know, I, I, in my mind, customer service brings everything, and, and, you know, we're gonna plan for the business we want, not the business we have, and that's how we started. And, um, maybe to my own detriment, but I don't think that, I never do I ever think that, um, trying to run the best possible place is ever a problem to me. If you, if you try, it's like a build it, if you build it, they will come type of thing, and that's kind of how we wanted it to happen. Uh, we ran into some unforeseen expenses, I mean, eighty-five thousand dollars. I don't know anybody in this community that if they, business owner or not, that if they tomorrow had to just check out eighty-five thousand over three months, that would not, you know, that's destroy them. I mean, we tried to stay, and I got a predatory loan to pay for, uh, to keep operations going, just to make sure I was paying those things as well. And, you know, that was costing me six thousand dollars a month. At just that loan, that's how much I had to pay back, because it was a, like a ninety-day quick money loan, you know, because all my other options, I, I'd kind of already used them.
So you're looking at, uh, close to two dozen employees?
Yeah, yeah.
Would that make it the largest employer that's out? Is there anybody else?
Nope, that make it the largest.
Okay, I didn't even think of that.
Uh, we, you know, I never knew whether we needed them or not, because I needed them to be, to take care of their family. So what I could do with one waitress, I was doing with four. I mean, because I wanted to make sure everybody, you know, always had the, the waitress they loved to be there, or whatever, and we were, and we were doing enough. But some days it was slow, some days it was slow, so let's get past that. Um, but, I really, man, I really appreciate you coming up here. I, I meant the world to me, because when I saw you open that paper, I was like, oh, go. I was thinking, did I get stuck out? I'm never gonna give up on this community. You say time is, is time an essence, uh, uh, of an essence? Me, for me, yeah. I mean, for us, yeah, if we want it open, but it's gonna happen. I, I'm not gonna give up on it until it does. So, uh, luckily, this time I have plans, so I can kind of stay what I'm doing, what I'm doing, to make sure that it's going to get to, get past that second year hump. We did way more than I ever imagined of just opening up. I literally, at the end of the year, I said, if we can do fifteen thousand gross a month or a week, that's what, I, my goal is, we did it week one, we did twenty thousand week two. We stayed about fifteen thousand after that. So I was completely happy with where we were. Uh, like I said, it's just a few very, um, unforeseen and, and tragic events. I mean, if you looked at the paperwork I gave you guys, it's not even including the December, the fact that we didn't have heat. I lost a huge party if you guys were coming, because it was thirty degrees in there, because of my AC went out. I lost big, you know, big things that we had planned that were revenue that was coming in. It just seemed like every time we needed step forward, there was something, you know? But hey, I'm willing to do it all again for everybody, you know, uh, um, it's, it, let's get back to it. Is, is time an essence? Yes, the faster I get it open, the faster you can bring back that income and get, get you guys paid back. Um, everything is already set up. I've already got contractors coming and do their work right now. I have, um, allocated what I have set back to most of those, uh, construction things, and, but I can do them one by one, or I can do them all at once. That's kind of how the timeframe is. I can get everything done. This, while we were closed, I employed, we had like ten guys working over there, it was a team, like, and there we had construction jobs, same thing now, you know?
Well, the reason that you asked the question was.
I asked the question, because the only thing on the agenda tonight that the council could approve tonight is the loan. But there's nothing that would prevent the EDC from going back after the fact, after they made the law and considering different terms of the loan, which could include forgiveness, or could include a different incentive package based on your projected appointment. There's all different kinds of things that the EDC could consider.
Grateful for whatever.
Yeah, so.
I stand up here like, maybe I'm grateful for whatever, uh, my wills, and, and this, and the city council wills. You know, I, I'm happy and I'll, and I'll make it work.
I have a question. I was, I can't remember if I was at the meeting or not, but at, at the EDC meeting, you, uh, when they offered to loan you the money, you kind of said that that would work, but you're not gonna be open on November the first with that. What, was it not what you asked for?
No.
Or was it, or was it because you had to pay it back, or?
Um.
I got the impression that it wasn't enough money to get you to November the first.
Uh, I think there's a little more that needs to be done on November first, and I, um, thirteen thousand is, you know, is enough. But she was saying it took thirty days to get in anyway. Or, or something along those lines, like two, three weeks. So I was assuming that it's not gonna be, we're not gonna be open on the first.
They don't have it done on Thursday.
Okay, I was, I was thinking that it was gonna be a little further off than that, so, uh, we, when we had spoke at Fat Cats, I, I thought, uh, our consideration, what I told you was November first, we'll try to get open, but then, when she explained to me how, uh, EDC works, I was like, assuming that would take a minute.
They would have to have another meeting.
Well, you know, you can go ahead and approve the loan now. We could go ahead and get that.
And then you could come back and change the terms.
But we can change the terms later. That would be the smartest way to do it, because that way, he could go ahead and get the money, you know, as quickly as we could get the agreement made out. If we wait.
You approve the grant too.
Well.
That's not what's on the agenda.
That's not what's on the agenda. Um, so, if we said that they don't approve the loan, then we all have to have another EDC meeting. The board will have to make another discussion, and then we'll have another week that we're waiting in between.
So how long does it take you to, to have another EDC meeting?
Well, we have to put notice out there, so because of that, it would be like, I couldn't do it this week, I would have to do it next week.
Okay, so two weeks?
Yeah.
A two-week time frame?
Yeah.
Okay, to have another meeting?
Yeah.
To do a reconsideration?
Right.
That's assuming everybody could be there.
And that's assuming that everyone could be there, getting the quorum, and it would also, you know, they could go back in, because it's not me that makes the decision.
Sure.
I go in and I tell them what we've got here and ask them, you know, what we'd like to have, I'd like to see happen.
Sure.
So I went in and told them I'd like to see him get a grant.
Okay.
But it's up to the board to make the decision. And when you do that, then there's people that, you know, they have other ideas on the board, so, um, and they want, you know, so you can't promise that they will pass it. They agreed to this loan at that meeting, um, you know, and maybe, and may, and maybe if they hear, you know, some of this, you know, I would invite you to come to the reconsideration thing.
Yeah.
And maybe if they heard some more, they might consider just changing.
Because if you, if you have, if you have your citizens of this town who, who contribute to the taxes and stuff like that, and if they're, if they have an interest in his business and to see it move forward, it's into the best interest of, of the city, because your, your, your people are wanting that.
Now, you realize that the EDC does not get money from your taxes.
I understand.
Yeah, so.
But you, but you do.
But our goal is to help every business we can.
But you do get money from our, uh, our, our liquor, our liquor or whatever.
Sales tax.
No, not at all. Not from that at all.
You don't get, you don't get, you don't get any money from the liquor?
No. No, just from the sales tax. There is sales tax on restaurant sales, so it will generate EDC.
I just brought that up because it was, uh, we've only got one business, uh, and it had nothing to do with the EDC, but I only brought it up because Rancheros currently is the only business that we collect mixed beverage use tax. And before, it was Fat Cats and Rancheros. Theirs doesn't serve beer or mixed drinks, and we don't get anything from the service club, so. It's all.
Well, let me know when, when you have, when you come in. Okay, so. So what I'd like to see happen, I guess, is go ahead and, uh, approve the loan, so I can go ahead and give you some money.
And then, and then have your EDC review.
I make a motion we approve the West Quackeny Economic Development Corporation offer of a loan to help reopen Fat Cat Bar and Grill located at fourteen thirty-three East Highway two seventy-six, West Quackeny, Texas.
I think you need to add the caveat.
No, no.
We're just.
They do that.
Chris second. Oh, favor?
Kevin, finish.
Liam, mine.
Pam, Ray, go with mine.
Chris, Burkett.
It is, yeah. Moving on to number ten, discussion and/or action to approve sanitation solutions pay increase uh, and revising the fees the city is charging for garbage service. In your packet, there is a, uh, a letter dated September twentieth, uh, which is indicative of a. One moment, Lord, if that exits.
He's had to handle.
All right, so.
Okay. Thank you very much, everybody. God bless.
Okay, item number ten is the discussion or action to approve sanitation solutions pay increase, yes? Uh, and request, uh, revising the fees the city is charging garbage service. As I said, can we leave it outside real quick? We're trying to conduct a meeting. As I mentioned, uh, you've got a contract, or not a contract, a, a notice of increase, uh, which is six point five two percent. I spoke briefly, uh, with our, our council about this, and, uh, I believe you said that, uh, it's, there's something, uh, in the contract.
They have escalators in the contract for, that match, uh, inflation. And we have to do it.
You've already breached it. Yeah, it's, it's six point five two. I mean, is that? I mean, it's not cola, that's set a little higher than what the cola is.
It's actually below, I think, what this, the, the place that last year was about eight percent, so. So you're actually sliding in under.
So the only thing we can do is up them.
You, you can adjust your, your, wait, you need to adjust whether you continue to make the settlement out, or you've got, you've got, you just, it depends on your budget.
Yeah.
You've got a certain amount of revenue in your budget for trash service, you need to maintain that revenue.
Yeah, and, you know, that's, that's the tough thing, that, quite honestly, personally, I'm a little bit disappointed in, in sanitation solutions. Because this came, well.
It just comes, it came at the wrong time.
It came at the wrong time of the year, and they know, they know what our budgets are, because, quite frankly, nearly all cities are about the same year. They operate the same system. So I'm a little bit, I'm, I'm a little bit, uh, taken away by that. But then, the second thing is, is it's quite disappointing that they, they can't even address it to the correct mayor.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, that's, that's waste connections. Uh, when, when sanitation solutions, when they were headquartered in Paris, it was a different company and a different.
And, and I understand that, but, but at the end of the day, right now, my, my question is, is if we don't accept this, then what? Right?
Then we violate the terms of due diligence.
Okay. And what, what is the ramifications for that? So my, my question is this, are we, are we in breach of a contract, or, or is this letter null and void, because they didn't even send it to the mayor of our seat?
I don't think it's null and void. It, it got to the right person at this point. And we've got, no, the council has noticed of the request.
You, you see where I'm at, though. I mean, I mean, we need to express our.
We don't have an opportunity to, to respond. It's either we pass it and move on, or we don't have kind of response to, hey, why did you wait till September? Why did you address it to the, to the current mayor?
Why can't we get in here and negotiate? I do want to, none of y'all were on council. Sanitation Solutions came to us.
I was.
Seven or eight years ago.
You're talking about when they passed, when they didn't do an increase?
No, no, the, the, when, when they came and asked for an increase, and, and Josh came in, and that was when diesel prices had gone to five dollars a gallon. Uh, back.
Two now, huh?
That was George, George Bush, the president. That's, I, that's when diesel prices went so high. And they came in in January, because diesel prices had jumped through the roof. And they came in and asked for the price increase. And I, we have, the city said, Josh, I understand, but my recommendation, council, is that we don't grant it now. We'll wait until September, we'll start on the budget by October one. And he agreed to that, even though he paid for that fuel for those, during those months, and he didn't balk it. I had to buy him a hamburger at the end, but that was the call.
I was gonna say, at least the opportunity to negotiate is very good.
Yeah, yeah, he came here.
Well, and we've already got the contract signed.
Yeah.
We gotta go, we gotta let him have the increase.
We can't negotiate the increase?
No.
It's already contracted.
It's a contract for increases.
It's contracted for increases. Is it contracted for the amount of the increase?
It's based on the consumer pricing. We can still negotiate, can't we?
We not hearing?
That's, I think your president would have just, uh, there's nothing to stop you from contacting them. They'll come down here and talk to you.
Yeah, Woody would.
Woody would come down here and talk to you, man, in a heartbeat.
But I know Woody, he beat. He what's there.
He's talking about he didn't, he didn't, he didn't remember seeing the amendment.
It's not illegal jargon.
In the contract.
There's not a, there's not an escalator clause in?
Nope, he said it real written and real.
It's easy to read, it's not illegal jargon, and I read several times.
I put it in the box, it's Michael's one, eh?
I brought it to her, but it's on her desk.
I never, I never got to look at it.
All the ones we've had before had increases and had, had adjusted clauses.
Yeah, they like to remember coming every year.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I guess it's been ten years, and they came in, but that's when we agreed to keep sanitation.
This is, this is waste connection. I don't know, the contract form may have changed. Sanitation Solutions used the same contract form for years. But Waste Connections owns that company now, and I don't know if their contracts have been violated.
When did they bow, you know that?
About, about the time we went through all this was the last contract.
Okay, when we still, we, we, we opted, because we had two companies, sanitation solutions and Ameritech or something like that.
And Ameritech sold out within months after signing all those contracts, and at least one of my cities immediately refused to approve the amendments and rejected them. They threatened litigation, and we backed them all together. They were here. They did, they collected the fee, they just didn't collect the trash. That's one way to keep garbage trucks off of your street.
Yeah.
Just don't come get the trash.
Just lift the burn bag.
So Tam.
It is out of good policy.
Tammy's bringing up a really, really valid example. If we're looking at their current, what current pricing schedule, it's, it's in your package. The residential polycar first, it says thirteen ninety-seven. Well, that's not what.
Well, that's not what is being paid, so that's.
What are you paying them?
We, we as the citizens paid three bucks.
Three dollars for the first poly cart, ten dollars for the second poly cart.
For total thirteen. Or total ten if you got to.
Something's a little off here, and, and quite honestly, we should have had the contract to be able to.
Why don't you just, just pass this and tell them to come down here and talk?
And discuss. So I'm going to make a motion that we table this until we can have a conversation with sanitation solutions.
So these aren't the rights, our current.
No. So then, all this is jacked up, so I'm going to make a motion that we table that, that we table this until we have a conversation with sanitation solutions. And we have all, we all have time to review the contract to match it up to what they're bringing to us.
I will take that.
Yeah. Okay, y'all flip for it. Do we think, I mean, it would be too, so we've already got a scheduled meeting next Tuesday at six-thirty for another, for the sanitation, so we've already got a plan for that. Can we go ahead and squeeze that in there as well? Is that enough time?
What are we going to have on that agenda?
Well, we have time, but I mean.
What else we have on that?
That's a comprehensive plan.
Well, we do, yes, yeah, so it's, that's what the date is, seventeen. I'm trying to get through these annexations and variances.
That's what I'm saying. I didn't know what I was going to have on that. That's, I mean, I don't know, that's, I think, the sooner the better. I think the sooner the better.
I think we need to make time for that.
We got, we got to get this on the agenda, so.
We've got, on the back page, it's a consumer price index for all urban consumers, which CPI dash U. This is based on nineteen eighty-two minus eighty-four. I don't know, but.
I don't think we need to call it.
You find it?
Yeah, I think since we already had a motion, a motion and a second, and I don't know if we spend much time on this.
Yeah.
Chris, per Kent.
Okay, moving on to number eleven. I'm going to your packet. Discussion or action on resolution of the city council of the city of West Walkney, Texas, nominating candidates to the county appraisal district board of directors and setting an effective date, nominating five nominees from the list provided by the Hunt County Appraisal District. There are six or seven names on the list, so. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven of them. I don't know about any of you, I've never heard of any of these people's names.
First five are all the names.
Does anybody here know any of these people?
Never heard of them. I would have thought that they would have asked for someone in Hunt County. And maybe they have, maybe one of those names is Quinlan or, or Hawk Coe, I don't know. I don't.
Well, we only get fifteen votes, and Green will get like two hundred and sixty. So it's not a chance any of us would ever get on there anyway.
I don't know, we all just vote for one. One go around the table, is that right?
Well, you can vote. You can give all fifteen of your votes to one, I think, if you want to.
I don't, we're supposed to choose five.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we all go for one each is what I'm getting.
Okay. I vote for the first one. You just got four hundred?
Quinlan, yes.
Yeah, Quinlan, okay.
So we can put them all towards that.
Quinlan could same vote who do.
We don't have any of those.
Bill Creed was on that thing.
Yeah.
And Larry Paree was on it.
So what are we going to do?
Larry, I mean, of the city, but.
But the ISD has four hundred and thirty-five.
Yeah, the ISD, Quinlan has four hundred and thirty-five. The ISDs all have more votes than, than the cities have.
Who are we doing?
I don't know. Let's just down.
Yeah.
We're going, we're all just going to give a name, or what?
I know Stephen Stone. I would say that he was a good one to have on there. And I know, I know.
You know Stephen Stone? What is he about? Who is he?
I just talked to him on the phone. We've done assessments or stuff. And whatever I've asked questions about properties, he's answered my questions. So that's, that's the one I know. He goes with cash, I think.
Go around the table?
That's probably the one I know.
I'm going to go with Jim Bob Grove.
You took Jim Bob Grove. I'm going to take Tyson Cox.
Mike Taylor.
You said Tyson Cox and Jim Bob. What'd you, what'd you say, Pat? Or did you?
Stephen Stone.
Stephen Stone.
The one I know because I've talked to him on the phone.
Yours is what?
Mike Taylor.
Oh, Mike Taylor. Robin, you're odd man out there.
I don't know. Mitch Moore.
I don't even know.
There's no women on that list.
No, there's not. You're right.
That's not right.
No. You have six of them.
On that one?
We're good on that.
No, because we're, we've selected five.
You ready for anything else?
None of the same, so. So just to make it clear, those that were voted on according to the Hunt County Appraisal District letter that they sent to the, to the city on September fifteenth, Tyson Cox one vote, Jim Bob Grove one vote, Mitch Moore one vote, Stephen Stone one vote, and Mike Taylor one vote. There's five, five of our votes right there. We've selected five, so you got that? Fifteen is what we give, but.
So you're giving three each one?
We're giving three each one. Yeah, sure.
Everybody's lost that one. So, little promotion.
I make a motion with your turn.
Second.
Who did the first, starting on the discussion?
Oh, did we have to be, did we have?
I think the action was your vote that we.
Okay.
Did we miss a vote on line elevens?
That is the one. You voted.
Oh, that's right.
I don't think there's really a clear.
We'd be approving each other. We'd be approving each other to vote.
Okay, so I didn't ever, what, I think, Leon, Leon, I second it, and then all the hundred and fifty.
Leon, mine.
Pam, read.
Your turn.
Those annexation packets she had. That's why they expect.